Yeah. Thank you. Welcome back to the February 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education. It is our community meeting and also the first meeting of the budget season. I'll ask that you rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Number four on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. O'Hara?
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick updates. First, our COVID numbers. We are at 199 cases to date in the school district. That's 140 students, 59 faculty. And sadly, in our country, we've reached 500,000 deaths from this virus. So this has been a challenging time for everybody in the United States and, of course, across the globe. Today is February 23rd, and I know for sure that February 28th of 2020 was the first letter I sent in correspondence with the community regarding this virus. So on a sad note, 500,000 deaths, but on a positive note, thank you to the HopHog community for your strength and your resolve, your cooperation and your patience and your understanding. Because I think in this school district, we've done a great job combating this virus and keeping our students in school and keeping people safe. We're going to need that cooperation and support to continue. There's definitely a light at the end of the tunnel, so let's just stay strong, HopHog, and continue to beat this virus down. Regarding our seniors, pay attention to our Facebook page, our Instagram account, our Twitter account, and certainly our electronic sign on Townline Road. The salute to seniors has started. I've seen two or three on Facebook already. It's always exciting to read about the students' accomplishments, where they're headed next year, and what pursuits they'll follow in their post-secondary lives. So please, everybody, pay attention to that. Quick announcement about next Tuesday, March 2nd, is a distance learning day for high school students in grades nine, 10, and 12. It's a distance learning day for the high school students, but students in grades nine, students in grade 11 will be taking the ACT, forgive me. Nine, 10, and 12 are on distance learning. Students in grade 11 will be taking the ACT on that day. All 11th graders take this exam. The district covers the cost. Thank you to the Board of Education for supporting that initiative that we began four years ago. HopHog continues to be the only school district on Long Island that pays for this assessment, this entrance exam for our students. And right around this time last year, we went into lockdown. All subsequent SAT and ACT exams were canceled. But because of this program, Dr. Probst's recommendation, the board's support, our foresight, every HopHog student in the class of 2020 had an ACT score coming into the fall. And that wasn't the case for districts across Long Island. So just a reminder that grades nine, 10, and 12 will be on distance learning on March 2nd, and our 11th graders will be taking their ACT. One quick announcement about state assessments. The U.S. Department of Education put out word in the last day or two saying that they won't waive the requirements that students are going to have to take the assessments. But the Board of Regents put out a statement that said these assessments might not, most likely won't be required as graduation requirements. So we're in a little bit of flux right now. Students may have to take some of these assessments. We have to discuss how to handle that. But the great news for all the students in HopHog is since our educational program has been so strong in person since September and synchronous teaching every day for those who aren't in school, that's not the case across Long Island. I think whether students in HopHog have to take these assessments or not, they'll be fully prepared, so nobody has to feel any stress over this. And we'll communicate with the community in the coming days and weeks as things take form. And that's it for me, Mr. Barcia.
Thank you. Dennis, when you refer to assessments, are we talking about the Regents exams as well?
Yep, 3 through 8, some Regents exams that are graduation requirements. Those are the ones that the Fed is referring to.
Yeah.
Recall, last year, everybody got a waiver. So they've communicated that they're not granting waivers, but there's some wiggle room.
Correct me if I'm wrong in the way I view this, but to your point about how we've been in school and asynchronous teaching, you know, I think our kids are in the catbird seat as far as the advantage they have over the other students taking those tests in other districts. I won't mention district names, but I know some districts are not even close to getting through the curriculum for the Regents and certainly not nearly as far along as we are. I mean, shouldn't we be hoping, yes, it's stressful, but shouldn't we be hoping that those assessments do take place and that there are no waivers? I mean, it seems our kids are positioned really well in comparison to their peers.
Well, I would say that our, I believe 100% our students are positioned really well because our teachers have done a great job, the planning over the summer and the reopening plan and everything that went into it, from everybody in the district, custodians, parents, administrators, teachers, clerical, it's just, our students are in a great spot. My heart does go out to students all across the state. It really, this is a phrase that I never use, actually. It is not fair. It's not equitable over the last two years because it's really clear that districts that are struggling the most go along poverty lines, and it's really disparate across the state. So, you know, our students, what I'd like to communicate is just don't stress. You're ready. You're in a great position. And any assessments will be used only to help our program or to help you, but just keep doing what you're doing, keep working hard, and don't worry about them.
Okay. Thank you. Number five on the agenda, 5B is a presentation. It's the 2021, I'm sorry, 2122 school budget by Ms. Piero.
Mr. Barcia, may I interject for a moment?
Absolutely.
Would you like our two principals we have as guests tonight to go before that?
Jackie, how long is your presentation roughly?
It's not very long. Five, 10, not even, it's not very long. It's an overview, so it's not in-depth.
Dennis, if it's okay, let's just keep to the schedule. I know Mr. Cook loves budget discussions. He's been begging to be part of this meeting for that reason, so let him stay for it, if we could.
Thank you, Ms. Barcia.
Yeah, of course. Jackie?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Sharing my screen for the 2021-22 budget overview. For anybody watching not familiar with our process, we pretty much start the first evening with a budget overview, kind of an overarching look at the budget process as we go. We have four budget workshops scheduled. Tonight is the first one, and then each, every time we meet thereafter, goes into a little bit more detail on revenue, some more curricular areas and such. So it's kind of a work in progress. What I present tonight is where we are as of today. Things change a little bit between now and middle of April when we adopt the budget. Things like state aid, things like PPS reviews, things in general just changed between today and April that may tweak certain lines in the budget and on the revenue lines, all of which will be shared back here publicly as we go through the weeks of the budget process. So take that for what you will for now. We'll go through the process and the budget as it stands today. And if you have any questions, just let me know. So as a snapshot, what does the budget look like for 2122? It's a 3.65 increase over the current year, which we are now in 2021. It's a $4 million increase over the current year we're in, yet it is still compliant with the tax levy, which is an increase of 1.34. Remember, the budget is the spending plan for the school year next year. The tax levy is the portion of the revenues that come from local property taxes. We have a tax cap. This budget is compliant. I'll get into it in another slide and more so the next time we meet. However, we're able to do almost 4% increase in the budget on a small tax levy due to the increase in state aid, which we are expecting. So a little bit about our enrollment. Our enrollment is dipping down about 1% for next year. Nothing too, too crazy, but I always include a slide on enrollment so you have an idea of where our numbers of our students are trending in each of our grades. I'll touch on some curriculum and instruction areas that we have in the budget and what we're looking for for 2122. Obviously, a continued emphasis on some STEM coding in the high school coding courses, middle school hackathons, elementary coding instruction. We'll continue the reading, writing, and math efforts that we have with Teachers College, the Wilson Reading System, and Branching Minds and Great Minds, the Eureka Math Platform will be continuing. We also can support the Career and Technical Education Programs offerings at BOSI. We've increased those numbers in enrollment in the last few years, so this budget supports that as well. Continued rollout of Amplify Science, partnership with NASA-BOSI regarding the multivariable calculus offered at the high school students. So those students who have exhausted all of their math offerings currently in HopHog have this relationship with BOSI, and that has been successful. We'd like to continue that next year. As far as technology goes, thankfully, we, well, we kind of have it now, but fully K-12, students and faculty, one-to-one devices and technology, includes the upgrades to network infrastructure, wireless access points, monitoring tools. And this budget also continues our multi-year security IT project throughout the district focusing on cameras, access control, and lockdown technologies. As you recall, we've been an exhaustive effort in finding the right firm and the right fit for the district to roll out a smart technology IT plan for the district comprehensively. And we're doing that thanks to Dr. Murphy, obviously, and Patrick Caffrey's helping us as well as Tim McCarthy on getting that off the ground. We'll continue the college awareness. Obviously, COVID-19 compliant if we can. Kind of had a little bit of a halt last year due to the pandemic, as you know. All the budget supports, the college visits, the middle school and high school, college application support, ACT and PSDT experiences, some of which Dr. O'Hara just alluded to. The school day ACT for the 11th graders next year, as well as the PSAT for 9th, 10th, and 11th as well. So that's all supported in the budget. So staffing, what does it mean? What are we doing with staff for next year? So for next year, we're looking at, just in general, five full-time replacements. I'm sorry, instructional retirements, four teachers and one nurse that we're aware of as of today. And there's some increases in some departments that we're looking at. Some of them might have been shaved down a little bit last year. We're trying to get the boots back up again next year with FACS, Family Consumer Science, Health, Phys Ed, some custodial areas, music, technology ed, STEAM and business, as well as potentially two new positions in high school special education math and one high school social worker. So all those areas are addressed in the budget that's before you. Some health and safety capital projects, we include these two slides just to address some of the things that Mr. Rosini, our new facilities director, well, he's not new anymore. He's quite seasoned after the year he's had. But I add these slides in there to give you a little information what we're doing. We're looking to continue floor abatements at the high school, which doesn't sound that fun, but I can promise you, Mr. Cook is super excited. It really changes the layout of a room. You can update the flooring and get some color in there. So we've been doing that and continue that at the high school next year. Middle school cafeteria air conditioning. So I know Ms. O'Connor's on the call. She'll be very happy about that. We've put that into the budget for next year, as well as upgrading some of the casework, flooring and lighting in the technology rooms in the middle school. The elementary schools will get the front awnings that we have currently at the middle school and high school, something similar, and each of the elementary buildings are in the budget, as well as Bretton Woods has a little TLC out back, their handball court, and the sidewalks will be replaced. Bretton Woods and Pines will get some LED lighting upgrades in the hallways that we did at Forest Brook this year. And Pines will also get some flooring abatements, which is new flooring, replace the old and such. So just a simple, well, not so simple, but an overview slide on the tax levy and revenues. A lot of numbers on this screen, but I'll go through it relatively easily just so you have an idea of what happened. So overall, the budget, as you know, is our spending plan, which is at the bottom of the screen. So our spending plan for 2122 is at the bottom. How do we pay for that spending plan? Or those six categories above it is our plan of how we pay to spend, to operate the schools next year. We have a tax levy, state aid, we have pilots here in HopHog, we have other small monies from rental incomes and such, reserves and fund balance. Those are the six categories we use here in HopHog to pay for our spending plan next year. Much of why we can include what we did this year has to do with the state, as of now, saying they're going to make districts whole. As you recall, we were in a much different place this time last year with COVID kind of coming upon us, and they told us we were going to have 20% cuts to aid. And we projected that as much this time last year. That said, they have verbally told us or announced that the state school districts will be made whole the current year we're in by the end of the year. We are not whole yet, but they plan to be whole by the end of June, is my understanding. And that the projections for next year from the state look to be about whole again. So a slight bump up, but like a normal, typical state aid year, if you will. So this budget uses the numbers that we received from New York State in January. We will receive updated numbers from the state on or about April 1st. And typically, that's when we revisit a few different things. So any of the budget changes between now and April, I start a trace document, and we review with the board, and we review with the public, any change to the current budget document, any additions, you know, on the revenue side or any additional expenses we have to address. And then we kind of tie it all together when we get the final state aid run in early April. So that's kind of what we're looking at now. We'll see what happens on the next run that we get. Right now, again, it includes everything from the state that the state says they're going to get. The only thing that's not in there, it doesn't, not address any changes with the STAR payment. I'm just going to park that right there. I won't go into that until next time we meet in two weeks about aid. The state kind of threw STAR in there, and it, we don't plan on having that be part of the state aid package at this point. So the next three budget workshops are March 9th, the 23rd of March, and then we adopt the budget on April 13th. And two weeks from today, we'll be discussing the revenues, the tax cap, and proposition number two. The following week will go a little bit deeper into curriculum and instruction and some technology budget components. And then after that...
Am I the one, am I the only one that's losing audio here?
I think so.
I'm fine.
Yeah? Then it's just me. Sorry, Jackie.
No problem. And then by the April 13th budget adoption, we should have some final state aid figures to hone in on and have a final number for you guys. And then, once we have a final budget adopted, then we have the budget vote scheduled for May 18th here at Whippoorwill, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And all of our information in this presentation and the information supported is all on the website that anybody can go look at. Any questions from anybody? I know it's early in the...
I have a real, real quick question. Maybe it's just a simple correction, Jackie. On the proposed tax levy and recommended budget with the numbers?
Yeah.
Are the years on the expense line, do they just need to be updated?
On the screen?
The expenses. It says 18, 19, and 19, 20.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. That's all.
The numbers are accurate. The years are reflected wrong. I'll update that for the website.
Good, thank you.
21 and 2122.
Jackie, can you talk a little bit about what our expectations are as far as state aid and whether, one, we have been or will be made whole concerning the holdback from this year and what we should expect next year?
Yes, of course. So the state has said that they plan on making us whole. The federal government has given New York State the dollars to make school districts whole the current year of 2021. So originally, the state started holding back on 1920 revenue. So if you go to this time last year, in the spring, when COVID first hit, they started holding back the prior year 20%, which is why we said, oh, they're already holding money back. They didn't even plan for this. There's no way we can get to getting it next year. They've since released that 20% hold on the 1920 funds, and they have not held from the 21, the 2021 funds, the year we're in now, yet. In the beginning of this year, we thought it was because they make the pensions whole first. The state actually pays the pension system on our behalf. Since then, we've found that they have been funded by the government so that we will be made whole the current year we're in, which is why we're in a fortunate position of a revenue increase with our aid to the extent in which we are, because we're jumping from a lower number that we thought we were going to be shaved 20% to where the state is projecting. So these numbers use what the state gave us in January. I do expect an updated run in April. On or about April 1st is when we get the next run from the state to see if what the governor proposes is accepted or not, and we'll have more numbers at that point. For this year, even though they're telling us we're going to be made whole, we aren't physically made whole until really just after June, usually by July or August. But we have a really good idea by the end of June that want to get, you know, 100% of it.
Right. The other question from me, you know, Newsday had this article. I had asked you about it at our last meeting, I guess, but there's some, I've gotten a few questions and there's some, I think misconceptions about what that article meant as far as state aid cuts and what we can expect, more or less than zero. And I know that HopHog and Comac were green, meaning we were getting more, and Smithtown was red. And I think that the idea in the article that some of that is based on student need. And I know demographically, there's very little difference between those districts. Is that a student need issue, or is that a budget, a result of budgeting, or something else?
I do believe it's something else. What does that mean? That means the state aid run isn't, when you get state aid numbers, what does that mean? We're getting $16 million. How they come up with that $16 million is based on about 35 different formulas. That said, the data that goes into the formulas, the business office puts in six months ago as projection of what we think we're going to spend this year. So if I put numbers drastically up or drastically down, I could totally swing our aid next year if we really wanted to. So depending on what you put in as your data, you'd be as accurate as possible so that your aid reflects what you're doing, that has something to do with it. The transportation piece of aid is huge. So for districts may have, one, projected not spending it because, or not putting in for it, because remember, for other districts who did transport students during COVID, the state is now saying, you know, we're not paying aid on that number. So if they projected having money in for transportation, for example, that now the state's not paying because they didn't actually transport students, they just paid a vendor, that could be part of it. It really could be a whole host of reasons why they're getting less aid. It's not as simple as the state just said, oh, you don't deserve it, or you do. It's really just not that simple, although it looks like that when you're looking in the newspaper of state aid district to district. I know that doesn't make it simple to understand, but it's not a simple answer. It's not just, oh, because they had 60 kids move in last week or in last year. It doesn't... We're just, we're amazing districts, so that's fine. But no, it's really not that simple.
Further questions from the board concerning the presentation thus far? And just a reminder, Mr. Scrito, before I go to you, this is the first of a series of meetings on this, and we'll drill down on the various components of the budget as we go along. So just keep that in mind with your questions. This was really just an overview of the whole process. Mr. Scrito?
Yeah, I just had four points, Jackie, maybe you can help me out on. Number one, we're adding another social worker. How many do we have? And then, Dr. O'Hara, is that enough that we'll have on staff to handle all the new situations because of the pandemic and the stuff that our families and communities are going through? That's question number one, please.
Yeah, what is our count? Two in the high school? Two in the middle school? Social workers wise?
This will be a third at the high school.
Yeah, so that would be five, Rob. The answer is, you know, probably not. You know, last year, we added a school psychologist, which was really crucial. And, you know, as we see how this budget fleshes out, there's a lot of social and emotional needs in our school district even before the pandemic. And it'll be exacerbated certainly following, you know, the pandemic or heading back toward what we call normal. So that's a great question, and it's something that we should keep an eye on as the budget develops. And if we could, if the board supports the addition of a social worker, we would jump on that opportunity.
Yeah. Dr. O'Hara and Mrs. O'Connor and Mr. Cook, you guys have to be your ears and eyes for the board and the community. I am concerned with only two social workers with probably, what, eight? How many kids in the high school? Eight, 900?
Well, there's 1,200 almost when everybody's full in.
So it's only two for 1,200?
Yeah, and I should, I should point, I mean, I could take this opportunity to point out to the board that, you know, although, I don't know, I don't have empirical data, it might be somewhat anecdotal, anecdotal. But there was a time in HopHog High School where there were four social workers. And over the years, through attrition, you know, the positions were lost. And if you recall, it could have been, Mr. Cook, you might remember, when did you make that presentation? It was two years ago, maybe, where he pointed out all the data and studies showing all the challenges for students' mental health.
Yeah, I think during my first year as principal, in the fall, we started having conversations about what were my observations about some mental health worries. You know, that's been a big priority of our team operationally since, you know, at least for the last three years, but for many years before that. And that this mental health crisis that we're in is not a HopHog crisis. It's a national crisis. But I would say it's something that we're going to have to pay a lot of attention to really intensely for many years.
Yeah, so if I could just, you know, I appreciate Dennis, Dr. O'Hara, and all your administration and, you know, Mr. Cook and Mr. O'Connor. We're going to need your ears and eyes now because, you know, the community, everybody's going through a very tough time. So, you know, please, you know, let the board know, you know, if two is not enough, we're going to have to work on it sooner than later. I just hate to, you know, two sounds like a small number for 1,200.
Rob, so this is a third that we're adding to that group, right? So this will be number three at the high school. And you guys did approve last year a psychologist as well, plus our additional vendors and support that we do bring in. But your support is very much recognized, and I thank you for it.
Okay, if I go on number two, Jackie, just so I understand, in layman's term, when the community asks, we're not going for a 2% tax, we're actually going for 3.65, just so I know?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, nope. The budget is the 3.65 increase that you're referring to. And that's what actual taxpayers vote on, is the spending plan of how we're spending dollars next year. However, the tax levy for our community would be 1.34 increase.
So my taxes go up 1.34?
It means that, no, it means that the school district is asking for 1.34% more money from homeowners and commercial. However, how each homeowner pays how much of the school tax is out of the school district's hands. So for example, you might, your taxes might go up 1% and your neighbor, and you're in Smithtown, and somebody who's in ISLEP might go up more. And there's a whole other piece of this puzzle that's beyond the school district. There are some residents who've had a large increase in taxes this year, not because we raised the taxes more than we said we did, but because the proportion of what comes from each town is set on factors that we don't control. So the district doesn't make any more money. So if your taxes by some chance, Rob, the next year, Mrs. Scrito, go up 5%, let's just say your school tax is about 5%, I'm not getting 5% more. I'm only getting the 1.34% increase. But how the towns collect it from the taxpayers vary each year. And that's not, the district doesn't get more than we say we're getting. We set the levy, and that's it.
Mr. Scrito, if...
No, go ahead, Dr. O'Hara. Go ahead.
I could add, it might clarify, because this is the way I think of it. If, if it was only the school district involved, and if the tax levy was distributed equally among every property owner in a school district, then your taxes would go up 1.34%. But there's other factors, different towns, people grieving their taxes, and things that factor in that may, sometimes Jackie gets phone calls. People are upset because it looks like the school taxes went up, but we're only asking the community for a 1.34% increase in the total tax levy. But how that gets spread out over the entire school district community is not really up to us.
No, I think that's it.
How'd I do, Jackie?
Good. You passed.
Okay.
No, I think you did great, Dr. O'Hara. I just, I know, Mrs. Piero, I'm sure you fielded a lot of phone calls between the ISLEP and the Smithtown townships because we do have sometimes huge differences between the two towns.
Frankly, the year we're in now, we have a huge one. Smithtown and ISLEP currently are much, much different. And the ISLEP town is feeling the bulk of the burden of school taxes this year, more so than the Smithtown side. The previous year, however, Smithtown had the bigger burden. It has to do with equalization rates set by New York State and a whole bunch of other factors. But the district is not getting, so when you get your tax bill, if it doesn't state exactly what we said we raised the levy, for example, doesn't mean we're getting more. It means we're getting more from your home than some other homes perhaps in the district for one reason or another. But we're not getting more than we say, that we set the levy for.
I had two other questions. Question number three, Mr. Barcia had alluded a little to this. In Newsday, Mrs. Piero, there was an article saying that New York State may get as much as $50 billion more for education if that 1.9 stimulus package passes. as $50 billion more for education if that 1.9 stimulus package passes. So I assume that's just a wish list, so we don't know if that passes, if it'll change all these numbers yet?
That's correct. And also, even if we know if it passes, I'm going to guess it's a nice, big fat projection that schools are going to have because in the next six weeks, I'm hopeful that we'll get some really solid numbers of projections. But if the state or the federal government do not yet figure out how to divvy up those dollars and if they're going to divvy them up the same way they have in the past or not with schools that have higher need, given the pandemic, we're not really sure. And like I said, the next state kind of draft of what the budget may look like for revenue is April 1st.
And the last question, you know, being the board member conservative here, our district death clock, how are we doing on that? We had mentioned this about three years ago. We had five years, are we down to two years, Mrs. Piro, or how close are we?
Well, the state just gave us the money for two years, so it kind of pushed us forward a little bit, meaning they made us whole last year, the current year we're in and next year seems to be the case. Again, schools function in a, in a, in a one-year point in time and you don't know what the state's going to do. The truth is, we did some smart money saving last year, which will pay off in our future years. The board was, you know, really thinking ahead as far as getting some money in reserves because when that does happen and the aid likely will fall short from the state, our goal is to be able to use some of our reserves that we put away last year and will do again this year as a revenue source to help, you know, soften some of the revenue loss that we'll have from the state in future years.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Barshay.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Scrito. Further questions from the board? Any points from administration concerning the presentation?
No, thank you, Jackie.
Yeah, Jackie, real quick, what, what is on the, the menu for the presentations between now and, and the budget vote?
The next meeting on the ninth, March 9th, will be revenue and proposition number two, tax, state aid tax cap. Then March 23rd will be curriculum instruction and technology. Dr. Murphy will probably take a spin at that, a little bit further detail. Then we set the actual budget on April 13th, I believe it is. And by then we'll have the final state aid runs and any tweaks. Often at that one, at that meeting too, we'll do a trace document, what I call a trace document, of any additions and changes in the budget between now and then. You know, increases, decreases, additional revenues, more expenses, whatever falls out and works out between the next six or seven weeks will be discussed at that meeting as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Piro.
Sure.
Any, any further questions on anything that I just asked from Ms. Piro? Or we can move on?
I have one quick question, Mr. Barshay. Mrs. Piro, you brought up a good point. This is the budget, as Mr. Fortmeyer says, for the next school year. Since we don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic, if all the students were to go back full-time, is that going to be added expenses for the, the plastic guards, busing, all that other stuff? How would we budget for something like that, not knowing what we're doing in September?
Well, we currently budgeted a normal year as we did for this year. So remember, we built the budget for the current year we're in right now. We plan on being in full-time. It didn't quite happen. We had to make some changes. We did a lot of budget transfers, remember, in the beginning of the year, taking money from field trips and things that didn't happen. Something like that would have to happen again. We would just reallocate within the budget where we're permitted to, to, to make it happen, if that makes sense. We didn't scale back the budget based on current staffing. We put it back to full to whole to some degree so we can run a normal program as planned next year.
The only reason I asked, there was another article, I know I need to do less reading, but there was another article about busing, how the schools now with students coming back are having an obstacle with buses because they're not being able to follow CDC guidelines because with increased students, there's only so much room in a bus.
Well, we actually haven't had too much of an issue because of the percentage we've had to stay home. An actual ridership on our large buses has been slightly up because we are putting extra big buses to spread students out. Our ridership on our small vans have been much, much lower for some reason than in the non-public schools. So our budget's kind of neutral. Subject's been great. We haven't had any issues to date. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, Mr. Scrito, regarding that, this fall and to date, the community's been fantastic with parents helping out, transporting their children and stuff. And so depending on how the guidelines go, we may need to reach out to the community again and say that, you know, those who can, would you please help us, you know, by continuing to, to drive to school?
Thank you very much.
Steve or Don, someone just joined via telephone. Can we identify that person?
I'm seeing that now. I'm thinking it may be, it's Gene. It's Gene, I guess, I got dropped from the, the regular link.
Of course you did, Gene. There were two of you at one point, so.
And one is enough.
One is enough, agree with you. But you can hear us okay, Gene?
Yes, yes, I'm on my cell phone. You can hear me as well.
Gene, do you have a fax machine?
No.
Oh. Teletype?
All right, let's move on. Come on.
Yes, sir. All right. Five, I'm sorry, five, B, two, and three are Chris Cook and Christine O'Connor. At our last meeting, we had asked Dr. O'Hara to set up kind of a review of where we are in the individual buildings with the principals. They had spoke to us early in the, early in the year when COVID was hot and heavy, not that it isn't now, although it's getting better. So generally, we wanted an update for both the board and the community about how we're doing in regard to COVID, any issues we're having, the good things, the bad things, what have you. I'll respectfully ask Mr. Cook and Ms. O'Connor to limit your, limit your comments or your presentation, or whatever you want to call it, to three minutes and then the board will have some questions for you. But I want to thank you both for coming tonight and sitting through the meeting so far. And so we'll start with Mr. Cook. And just as housekeeping, at our next meeting, we'll have the elementary school principals. Is that accurate, Dr. O'Hara?
That is correct.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Cook, you'll go first. How are you doing? How's everything in the board?
I'm doing, you know, pretty, pretty well. I think in the high school, you all have a lot to be proud of. I think some of the decisions that were made from the board, through district administration onto the high school and then, and our team's work across the board. I think you should all be very proud about what's going on at Hop Hog High School and comparably around the country. I say this pretty often, this is not a lost year for Hop Hog High School students and it is a lost year for many, many students in the world, not just locally, but nationally and internationally. And at Hop Hog High School, this is not a lost year. We just finished our 100th day of live synchronous instruction, whether that be at home or in person or on our virtual weeks like we're having right now. And I think there's probably 1% or 2% of schools in the world right now that could be able to see that after the opening of the school year. So to just kind of name it, I would say that it hasn't been an easy pathway forward. And I think Hop Hog has shown its colors. Certainly, we've remained hopeful and optimistic and kind to one another, but honestly, it's, this year's been about grit and toughness in a way that has been pretty impressive. We have about 100 cases since the beginning of the year associated with the high school. We had 15 before November 1st and we had 70 or so in the next 60 days and it's really tapered off again since then. And in that 41 or so, I haven't looked at the numbers quite in the last couple of days, but 41 from my last count were off-site, meaning that there was no chance of the person even being in the building at the time of, of either being in an infectious period or whether we were on a virtual week or whatever. So about 40% of our cases just not even associated with the school in any way at all. In terms of what we're doing academically, I think people have, you know, have spoken to that a little bit. We have a lot to be proud of. And we turned the corner to a spring assessment season where we've already taken a bunch of national assessments and then we turn forward to being, I think, very prepared for AP assessments, IB assessments, and then with the news coming down today, despite, I think, the, the stress that it causes to think that we're going to turn the corner into state assessments, Hop Hog is as ready as anybody to take those assessments. That isn't to say or to downplay the level of stress, that kind of going forward and hitting the, the spring assessment window is certainly playing at Hop Hog High School, whether that's for students or for teachers. I think this is an anxiety-provoking year. And then on top of that, we've kind of been able to sustain almost all of our other programming in one way or another. So we're just finishing up our first season, our winter season. We turned the corner on Monday to starting our fall season. Soon thereafter, we'll go into our spring sports seasons. And from all accounts, our efforts have been a pretty strong success and kudos to Mr. Butler and his group for kind of running in our murals throughout the fall and then turning the corner into varsity programming now. And then simultaneously to that, we've been able to launch our musical programs and sustain them at a high level. Our arts programs have been able to sustain and our clubs have been operating since the middle of the fall when we got things up and going. So while it's a very different experience at Hop Hog High School, everything that we typically would run is running in one form or the other. And on top of that, and we've talked a little bit in this meeting about the social emotional health of our students and our, and our entire team for that matter, I think it's been a tough year across the board, but we've had a tremendous focus on the mental health of our, of our organization, whether that come in the form of the PSI Love You Day that we celebrated right before break, or some other things that we've been doing in ongoing fashion to make sure that we support just recognition that people got to reach out when they have help and then, and kind of pointing people to the right avenues for help. So on the whole, I hope that's a decent update, but people should be very proud of what's going on at Hop Hog High School.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, as far as the curriculum goes, are we on schedule to finish the various curricula to be prepared for those assessments?
Well, I think it depends on, on who you ask that question. You're asking me. I don't, you know, I don't spend a lot of time looking at this, the specifics of the scope and sequence of curricula. And what I will say is our teachers are extraordinarily tough on themselves at the high school level. So if you asked our teachers, they might say, we're not quite where we need to be. But I, again, I think the pace that they're operating on is, is a tremendous pace considering all that they've had to deal with this year. And so I think if you were to ask our teachers, they might present a little bit of, of trepidation with that question. However, my estimation, and I think their director's estimations and Dr. Murphy's estimation from a curricular and, and instruction standpoint are that they are doing an extraordinary job at the high school level.
Absolutely.
One more question, Mr. Cook, from me. We had, early in, early in the year, there was a lot of worry in the community and on the board about the use of overflow rooms and how that would be fairly and judiciously meted out. Can you, I know, I mean, I know the answer to this, but maybe the public in general doesn't, but where are we on the use of overflow rooms?
We, I don't, I think it was the biggest kind of confusing puzzle to solve for over the summer. I would like to give a, a big shout out to Mr. Whitehorse, who kind of is our master schedule person for the building. We, I would like to thank our buildings and grounds team, like we ripped down walls. We've been able to orchestrate the building so that our bigger rooms have our biggest classes, our smaller rooms are used for our smallest sections. And all that means that we haven't had a single overflow situation all year. And that's not what I expected to be the case in August, but it kind of all came together. And with the percentage of students that we have out or students that have gone back and forth, you know, we haven't really had to worry about whether or not we'd get to an overflow situation. I mean, of course, throughout the course of the year, we'll, we'll see, but I don't think we're going to have a, a reason to go to overflow situations at all this year.
Great. Thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Scrito?
Mr. Cook, I know the AP exams will be coming up sometime in the future here. Do we have, for the students that are doing virtual, are we going to have a place, you know, for the AP test that they're all going to be spread out or do we have any indications of how this is going to play out yet, please?
Yeah, so, I mean, we have, we partner with two national organizations or international organizations for assessments, so IB and AP. And they have taken very different approaches to what they're requiring people to do. And so where IB is saying, you come in, you do your exams, AP is really offering multiple pathways for students to complete the exams on multiple timelines. And so what I mean by that, there's a, there's an initial window where you can do the traditional paper and pencil exams, and that's in the middle, early, middle of May. Then there's a delayed window that is all virtual, that we can do either onsite or offsite. And then there's another delayed window to catch all other issues towards the middle of June that would be either virtual, or actually that window is 100% virtual at that point. So they're supposed to give us guidance on March 2nd, the college board that is, final guidance on what this can look like. And then from there, we have some, some meetings planned early next week to kind of make sure we can hammer out our final plan related to those exams and we will communicate with the, the community shortly thereafter.
Yeah, can we make sure, Mr. Cook, it's possible, sir, to put down like the websites and stuff to help out the students so they have better ideas when we get more information?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scrito, I just want to add, it would be unlikely that we'd have students taking virtual exams at home because last year, there were quite a number of problems with college board and no fault of our kids or their parents and it was really frustrating. So should we go that route, that even the virtual will be on school grounds? We'll definitely communicate that.
Mrs. Weisberg?
Thank you. First, thank you, Chris, for your presentation and thank you, Christine, for being here too. I've heard nothing but really great things about what you are all doing in this district this year. You definitely are a leader in the way you've handled the pandemic, so thank you for that. My question is really just how are the teachers doing? You know, we talk a lot about the social emotional health of the students and I know firsthand what the teachers are going through trying to juggle both the curriculum and live streaming and trying to make sure that everyone is kind of up to speed. So just how are they doing? That's really just what I want to know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really hard and I will say they're doing great and it's really hard and so both of those things are true. I think every day is really an up and down situation. You know, many of our teachers, I would say 80% of the days are having fantastic days and 20% of the days are really hard. And for some of our teachers, it's, it's, it's been harder more consistently than that. But on the whole, they just, they kind of roll up their sleeves together and they keep moving it forward. And I think everybody kind of is looking around right now and can't believe we're 100-plus days into the school year. And I think people are exhausted and, you know, the things that we did coming out of February break, having this week, the report back because it ends up being a little bit of a slower place, a nice, you know, reintegration into school. I think that's true for our students and our, our teachers at the high school level. And so now I think actually people see a finish line. So it's not, not easy. People are doing a great job and I imagine we'll kind of continue with both of those strands being true the rest of the year.
Yeah, no, thank you. We appreciate it. I know that's an excellent job.
Yes. Any further questions from Mr. Cook? Okay, so again, Mr. Cook, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for coming tonight and thank you for all the hard work. And please extend our thanks and gratitude to your staff and faculty in the high school. What you guys have done this year for the kids is absolutely amazing and it's really given our kids an advantage that other districts simply do not have. So thank you so much for that.
Will do. Thank you very much all for having us. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the high school.
Sure, absolutely. Ms. O'Connor, how's, how are things in the middle school?
Thank you. Things are going well at the middle school. I feel very lucky to be part of such a great group of people. I mean, when you're talking about the safe and efficient operation of the building, our buildings and grounds, custodians, clerical and monitors every day are seeing that the building is run in a safe manner and they've been outstanding. We've been able to focus on what really matters as well is curriculum and instruction. When I talk to principals in other schools, many of them haven't had those conversations this year. And we've been back before Labor Day, five days a week, full instruction, and we really are right on track. Our teachers have been beyond phenomenal and their positive attitude and caring toward the kids, I honestly couldn't ask for more. Working with this group of TAs, directors, administrators, everyone embraced the challenge and continued to push forward. So my conversations aren't like other schools talking about moving desks six feet apart. That, that's done. We're, we're talking about what are we doing to better Hop Hog and make our students stay on track with our goals and have better opportunities. I'll give a quick rundown, but to be able to do this, I thank you for the opportunity. Our ELA and English department, three years ago, we added English lab in seventh grades so that we could continue with our articulation of the Teachers College Research-Based Program. Well, that was brought into seventh grade. All our teachers were given PD. They've continued that PD throughout this year. The same teachers that teach seventh grade English also teach eighth grade English and that helps to ensure the continuity of instruction and the TC model. That's going to help the results at the high school as well because we're sending our students up that are prepared with reading and writing in that regard. You as a board have also made a priority. You as a board have also made a priority for our reading program. We've continued to expand our reading services, including programs such as Wilson and Just Words. We schedule our groups around the students' actual needs. We don't have classes and fit them into it. We analyze from multiple data points what each student needs, develop a program for the students, and we build the schedule around it. And that takes an entire team. But I feel that literacy is a foundation of every other subject area, and I feel as though our district's making a priority to help students to achieve that. Regarding math, recently, some of you were on the curriculum committee and saw a presentation with our math director, Meredith Hansen. And again, in 1819, we realized we weren't finishing all of our modules. We needed to make a change, so we added a math lab and restructured our curriculum, backmapping it and also looking at our exit outcomes. Last year, we formed a committee to investigate expanding access to algebra in grade eight. And as a result, despite COVID, we moved forward and we added that math lab with that goal in mind. Last year, we had 28% of students who were taking algebra. This year, 36%. And I think a fair estimate, I anticipate close to 50%, despite COVID, being prepared, on track, ready to take that step and take algebra in eighth grade. So that should not be gatekeeping in middle school. We need to open that access right now in middle school so that students have access to that higher level math because our students can do it. We have outstanding teachers. Our teachers can do it. All we needed was a little restructuring and backmapping of the curriculum and allowing them the proper time, and the teachers are shining with it right now. It's not without its challenges, of course, but they really, they're pressing through and working really hard for each student. Science, the same thing. I was impressed when we brought in, you know, Rob Wankmuller had been working with Amplify Program. The Amplify Science Program has a direct correlation with ELA. It is very much looking at Bloom's taxonomy of teaching. It's not memory and recall. It's higher level synthesizing, analyzing. And the earlier you begin those skills with students, the better off they are later on. Those type of writing skills and analyzing skills, they need a lot of repetition. And Amplify Science is doing that, and our teachers have embraced it and are doing a wonderful job. To further complement that, two years ago, Regent's Biology was added as the honors course in seventh grade. And wow, did those kids shine. Right away from our first group, and again, having Rick Pupay as the teacher made it because he's outstanding, and you're going to see that group of students entering AP Bio next year. And we're proud that they will have Bio and Chemistry. Most schools don't take that until their senior year. Our students that were previously taking that at the high school had skipped a full year. They either didn't take Chem or they didn't take Bio. Well, now they'll have both. So we expect to see that push our AP scores for that very deserving group of students who are working hard. They're going to have the preparation they need to get more of those fours and fives that they deserve. Also, to complement the high school program this year, again, despite COVID, we said, what else can we do to move forward? We added science research for seventh and eighth grade. We actually run it through the lunch periods, but the kids love it. They bring their lunch down, they're engaged, they're laughing, they're smiling. So that's been wonderful. We plan on continuing it next year. Science fair projects are going to be remote. The top projects are in their final round right now. Dr. Wankmuller is interviewing them. Top two in grade six are going to Brookhaven National Lab. Top 15 in seventh and eighth, they will be at Long Island Science Congress. So we're moving along there. Social studies, we, again, feel it's really important to teach research. Students should know how to do research papers, and in seventh and eighth grade, all students do have that experience. Social Studies Department partnered with the librarian. She pushes into the classes, teaching students these research skills that they need to move forward. Backmap that curriculum to sixth grade, shorter writing assessments, but they are in line with what is needed for the research project in seventh and eighth. If we look at another subject area, also, I'll mention with library, our librarian has continued with book chats. She's also taken on a role of SEL. She helps out with advisory in the morning, sending out mindful moments, teaching students different ways of engaging in mindfulness, and also does that for our teachers as well. She runs workshops for them. In LOT, language other than English, which is French, Spanish, and German in our school, that's a tough, tough topic to be teaching when you need to see the mouth sometimes to teach pronunciation. Our teachers have embraced technology, really great when you observe the lessons, to see the different resources they're using to bring those authentic experiences to our students. So I really want to give hats off to the LOT department in that regard. This year, our wheel courses, our electives, they had to be different. We have the kids cohorted. We don't have the space in those classrooms to have spaced the kids six feet apart. So we have made adjustments, but we've been able to still maintain integrity with the programs. So family consumer science had to be done differently. We hope to get back to what it was because I think it's an outstanding program. Art, technology, health, the same thing. Our coding and robotics, excellent that we had that in each grade because we hope to feed into the high school and see more students take AP Computer Science in the future. Our job is to prepare students for 21st century skills, and we're doing it. They're on track. Music, we had to cut down the ensembles. They were too big. We made them small, put them in smaller groups, and we're hoping to go back to full ensembles, but our teachers brought a wonderful experience to our students. We actually are in the process of adding back clubs such as Drama Club, Select Chorus. Had the Drama Club meeting today, and we're going to have a play. It'll be done differently, it'll be done safely, but we're going to have one, and it's going to be excellent. Phys ed teachers, they've been amazing since day one. Should see the cool things that they're doing, disc golf and all kinds of things going on. So they also have focused a lot on SEL, which is needed. So a lot of the activities are team building or icebreakers that also help get kids talking so that you can see what's going on with them. Biggest challenge is social workers right now and guidance counselors finding that, yes, we have students who have emotional needs. We have Google classrooms for each grade of guidance where our guidance counselors send out private messages constantly, doing daily check-ins with students. Our social workers have separate Google classrooms for each of their students. So again, you can just boom, pop onto a meet, schedule things, everything's private. Resources are set up based on an individual need for that individual student. So it's free, like they'll rotate in and check in with all these kids. We also have our MTSS team working mainly with our social workers and guidance counselors. Any student below a 70 in any course, any marking quarter, we monitor their progress continuously and develop individual plans to make sure that we don't have students falling through the cracks. Also, technology, and I'm going fast, trying to give you all the information in a short time. Technology, thank goodness, we have the support and we're in the district we're in. I can't imagine accomplishing what we have without it. Remember back in 1819, the district was, we are thrilled that you supported us with an iPad initiative, which expanded to grade seven. Last year was key that the iPads were moved to grade eight and that we also had a technology integration specialist, Leslie Brophy, working with our teachers. She is phenomenal. She's given the teachers so much support. We had lunch and learns. We had all different opportunities, and we didn't even know it was around the corner, COVID. So we had, our teachers were very much prepared compared to other districts out there when this hit, and the work that they were able to do was amazing. They were nervous, apprehensive, but they rocked it. I mean, they really did. So that set us up for this school year. You know, our teachers, every classroom except one has distance learners and students live in class at every moment. You walk in, it's seamless. The teachers are talking to the distance learners, they're integrating with each other. I was on meets today popping into breakout rooms, and you should see the things that are going on. Is it without their own mental health suffering at times? No. So you know what Mrs. Weisberg said, it's tough. These teachers are taking on the world. But I have to say, everyone's having their moments of stress and frustration, but the positive, caring attitudes that we see every day, the teamwork that everybody's in it together and how they're helping each other, like for something negative, there's a lot of, a lot of good that has come out of it in Hop Hock. So when I talk to other principals, what they consider challenges where people are unhappy and upset, I feel that we have people who are rightfully frustrated with the situation of COVID, but still caring and putting the passion that brought them into teaching, that's there first and foremost. A couple other things I want to mention, thank you for the audio enhancement that was brought to the classrooms. Unless you experience it, it's hard to see just how great it is. When you walk in our classrooms, remember, they were all outfitted with sound systems, and that makes the sound evenly distributed throughout the entire room. Well, the challenges of having these masks on when teachers are talking, that wears your voice down so quickly. Having that feature for our teachers and for our students, it really helps you focus a lot more as a kid as well. So that has really, the timing could not have been better for us to be able to offer that. Every classroom has cameras, multiple devices. I mean, like I mentioned, you walk in and there's three things going on at once. So our district did a wonderful job providing us with what we needed technology-wise so that we could do what we need to do for kids. We're in the process, next week, Mr. McCarthy is going to be rolling out the Chromebooks for the eighth graders. So they have iPads now, but we're going to roll out Chromebooks to get them ready for the Chromebooks they're going to carry through high school. And that sure will be a smooth day when we do that, and we're just looking forward to it. So I want to say to the board, thank you for putting the money where it belongs. And thank you, Mrs. Piero, as well for constructing the budget that way because our money's well spent. It's toward curriculum and instruction. And I think people think right now it's really just toward things related to COVID, and that's not the case. Not at all. It's curriculum.
Thank you. I only wish that your presentation had been a little more comprehensive, but the paper we can get. Christine, one of the things you mentioned that, you know, the biggest challenge being social workers and social emotional well-being, can you talk a little bit more about that? Is it an issue of not having the staff? Or is it just the myriad issues that we have because of COVID? Or is it all, or something else?
It's more of what's going on today's day and age where you have some students on distance learning who now have 95 averages engaging every day. And we have kids who are either onsite or distance learning that are suffering academically. Not every parent's home, and we have a 12-year-old on the computer alone all day. It's hard to motivate them. It's not the same as when we have them here. So we are finding there are more students with grades that are dropping, more inconsistencies. Some of the kids require a lot of meetings with the guidance counselors, and they'll zigzag. They're doing well, then it drops, they're doing well. So we see that that personal connection, that interaction, that is the key. But yes, the volume's high. We have two guidance counselors for 800 kids, so they're following up on 400 kids. If they each have 100 kids who are failing right now and they're rotating them in daily, double, you know, something, failing something at some point, it's a lot. But I find they're making, they're successful with a large majority. We do have some ideas, there are some students that we are very concerned about. We've taken individual steps, but we have some plans we're going to be bringing forward in the next week or two as a tier-three intervention for our students that's within our budget and feasible.
Excellent. Any questions from the board from Ms. O'Connor? Christine, you've covered everything. Thank you so much for everything you and your staff in the middle school are doing. You know, hearing you speak about this stuff is always a treat. Your enthusiasm and your dedication to the district is recognized and really appreciated. And please pass along to your administrative team and your staff our appreciation and gratitude for everything that's going on in the middle school.
No, thank you. Glad to be part of this team, and there isn't a better place to be right now with all this. There really isn't, so.
Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Cook?
See you guys. Thank you.
Are you waving goodbye? Yeah, so.
I was, I mean, I could say something, but.
No, no, you would pail in comparison to what Christine did, so save yourself the embarrassment. Thank you so much, both of you, for joining us tonight. You guys can drop out with no negative implications from us. Thank you so much.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Benish, you want to be heard on any issue related to that? Or, I mean, they covered it pretty, pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, you know, they echo the things we've been saying all along. It's, you know, it's just been a total team effort across the board here, and it shows in the education we're able to provide.
Great, thank you. Okay, 5C on the agenda, the adoption of minutes from the community meeting of February 9th, 2021. Mr. Scrito makes the motion. Mr. Fortmeyer seconds. Any discussion concerning the adoption of the minutes? Seeing none. Mr. Barshay votes aye. Mr. Scrito?
Aye.
Mr. Scrito votes aye. Mr. Fortmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Fortmeyer votes aye. Dr. Krappa?
Aye.
Dr. Krappa votes aye. Mr. Kylie?
Aye.
Mr. Kylie votes aye. Mr. Buscarino?
Aye.
Mr. Buscarino votes aye. Mrs. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisberg votes aye. The minutes are approved 7-0. Before we move to the consent agenda, Mr. George, I accidentally overlooked you when we were doing the roll call earlier. Obviously, the minutes should reflect that you were present at the beginning of executive, executive session. My apologies. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any matters or any, well, are there any matters that members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Right, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is all of number seven in total. Mr. Scrito makes the motion. Mr. Fortmeyer seconds. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Barshay votes aye. Mr. Scrito?
Aye.
Mr. Scrito votes aye. Mr. Fortmeyer?
Aye.
Fortmeyer votes aye. Dr. Krappa?
Aye.
Dr. Krappa votes aye. Mr. Kylie?
Aye.
Mr. Kylie votes aye. Mr. Buscarino?
Aye.
Mr. Buscarino votes aye. And Mrs. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisberg votes aye. The consent agenda is approved 7-0. Number eight on the agenda is policies. 8A is 0116, gender-neutral bathrooms, first reading. Mr. Tasman, can you give us a little bit, a little background on the genesis of this policy? Is it a new policy? What is the cause for the policy committee taking it up, so on and so forth?
Sure. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Barshay. Yes, this past month, Governor Cuomo signed legislation to make this a law and effective March 23rd, 2021. All of our single-stall, single-use bathrooms in our buildings, we have to remove any signage that indicates boy, girl, male, or female, and replace that signage with gender-neutral signage.
Okay, so this policy is to bring us in compliance with the law? Is that what you're hearing?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
All right, and the wording of the policy, is that, is that something we created or is that, you know, pursuant to what the state is recommending we use?
It's pursuant to state, it's pursuant to the state language that they're recommending that we use.
Okay. Any questions or comments concerning the policy before it is returned back to committee? Joe, Mr. Tasman, I know there's certain regulations and rules concerning the number of bathrooms per students, with per student. Is this going to affect that ratio at all, a gender-neutral bathroom?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Barshay, but I'll confirm that with our, with council.
Yeah, we also.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I could just jump in, we had a facility committee meeting tonight with the architects. We had them looking into it as well, just to make sure all of our enrollment counts for staff and students are recovered. We should be fine in this regard because we're not taking anything out necessarily out of, out of service, but they're going to confirm for us to make sure that we're still compliant with the number of restrooms for, you know, females, females in district-wide.
And does the law or does the policy address both student and staff bathrooms or is it just us, the students?
It's all single-use bathrooms, Mr. Barshay. So the bathrooms that are for single use only, so it's staff and students. If it's single use, the signage should indicate gender-neutral.
And what does, what does that look like? And what does, what does that look like? What does gender-neutral signage look like? Is it just a matter of taking off non-gender neutral sign and leaving a blank or is there something that we should be using?
No, it'll just say, it'll, it'll take away the pictures of a male and a female and it won't say male, female, boy, girl. It'll say gender-neutral with a picture of a toilet.
Okay. All right. Any further questions concerning that policy? Okay, so that policy will be recommitted, sent back to the policy committee to be proposed for a second reading. Joe Endor Jean, is there a deadline by which the state is requiring us to make these, well, one to pass the policy and two to make any of the changes?
So it's by March 23rd is the deadline. So we'll be, we'll be in advance of that at our next board meeting to have the policy approved. And we're be working with, we're already working with our Ernesto on getting signs to indicate the signs for the bathrooms in our buildings.
So do you need the policy, Joe, approved in advance? I'm asking because we have a mechanism in our, in our board policies to advance a policy, to adopt a policy without a second reading if we're under a time constraint.
I do, I would make that recommendation tonight. Thank you for giving us that opportunity. I definitely, we reviewed it. I think we've talked about it tonight and we're obligated by law to have it in place by March 23rd. So having it in place tonight and approving it would give us ample time to get the signage in place so that we're compliant.
Okay. So with that, Lori, I'll ask you to make an adjustment to the agenda to have a vote on the policy tonight. You can, we'll do the vote now, you can take it down and just edit for a minute if that's okay?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. So concerning that policy, number eight, we'll exercise our, we'll exercise our right to advance that policy to a second reading without sending it back to our committee. And I will make the motion. Mr. Scrito seconds. Any discussion on passing that policy, adopting that policy, I should say? With that, Mr. Barshay votes aye. Mr. Scrito?
Aye.
Mr. Scrito votes aye. Mr. Fortmeyer?
Aye.
Fortmeyer votes aye. Dr. Krappa?
Aye.
Dr. Krappa votes aye. Mr. Kylie?
Aye.
Mr. Kylie votes aye. Mr. Buscarino?
Aye.
Mr. Buscarino votes aye. Mrs. Weisberg?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Weisberg votes aye. So that policy is adopted 7-0. Joe, that policy's been reviewed by council?
Yes, it has.
Okay. So with that, that policy's adopted, Joe, so you can do whatever you need to do to get us in compliance before March 23rd.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Very good. Thank you. Discussion matters, there are none, new business? Do any board members have new business? Does administration have any new business?
No, thank you.
I just have one thing, Dave.
Yeah, Dr. Murphy?
On the agenda tonight, the board approved, under other contracts, B2, I just want to highlight that for a minute and thank the board and just speak to those of you listening.
Don, that contract, that contract is to play on, play on sports?
Yes. Yeah, so I think parents have been happy. We've been streaming some athletic events recently and we've been doing that in-house. First of all, I'd like to commend Steve Swanson, who happens to be on this call. He's been doubling as a cameraman on weekends doing that for us. But for the last about six months, Mr. Butler, myself, we've been working to get this contract finalized with NFHS, Nancy Frank, Harry, Stacy, NFHS. And it's a, a network that districts are using to stream high school sports in a much more professional manner. We hope to roll that out and we do think that parents are going to be thrilled at the results. So there's some, there's some time between contract adoption and implementation, but I want to thank the board for approving that tonight. I think it's going to be well received by the community.
Thank you. Dr. Murphy? Number 11 on the agenda, question and comments from the community. Dr. Murphy, do we have any questions from the community?
I do. First question is from Rob Babich, who asks about the stance on allowing spectators to attend indoor and outdoor high school sports games. Mr. Butler let me know today that that's still something being discussed in the region and hopefully we'll have some guidance on that in the near future. Two questions related to the same topic of prom and graduation, one from Lucille Semenera, one from Mary Beth Krylovich. Dr. Howard, did you want to, they're just asking about the, any information about prom or graduation at this point in the year?
Yeah, I mean, I can explain about graduation, that at a minimum, graduation will be as well-done as it was last year at the high school commencement level. There would be no reason to pull back on that. Our, you know, just like last year, our hope is that we can provide the students with an altogether traditional commencement exercise. At this point in time, we don't know. I can tell you that we're in the process of contracting with the same videography company that we used last year and we know how to do the setup now. So as the situation evolves, we'll certainly communicate. And I don't have any information to share yet about junior and senior proms, except to say that, to be quite candid, they seem unlikely, but we'll be able to advise more as time unfolds.
Thank you. Don, before you get to the next, next question, Ms. Piro, at our last meeting, an issue came up or a question came up concerning safety related to the new Chick-fil-A and whether our kids would be walking up there and looking at some issues with that as far as increased traffic. Do you have anything to report back?
I do. Mr. Caffrey, our director of security, reached out to the fourth precinct and spoke to the inspector there and kind of gave us the procedure on how something like this would work. They basically said, once the establishment is open, any community member, the district, whichever, can call to report an unsafe situation. Like you can't complain about it until it actually happens, so to speak. And based on the number of phone calls that the precinct receives about the concern, they will have the highway patrol district do a full assessment of the area. So until, you know, it's an issue, then we need to bring it to their attention. They do an assessment of the area and then if they, if the finding is warranted, if they do warrant, you know, find that the area is unsafe for one reason or another, they will deploy resources to that area. It was approved by Smithtown. The other concern too is that it's right near Smithtown West to some degree, so we do expect it to be a bit full. So they're aware of it and they know about it. It did change at one point, the plan where they were putting it on that parcel did change a little bit. I think when they got the approval from the town or what have you, there was some changes that they did make originally. But, so we kind of have to wait for there to be a concern and then we need to do our due diligence and call and speak with the fourth precinct to let them know what our situation is. So that's the process.
Any questions or comments from the board concerning just that issue, the Chick-fil-A and what Ms. Piro, Ms. Piro just said? All right, Ms. Piro, just keep us advised of any, of any developments or further advice on any developments in that regard. Dr. Murphy, if you, thank you. Back to questions from the community. Do we have any others?
Two questions, one from Mr. Anspach, one from Mrs. Kavanaugh, asking about the status of Dr. O'Hara's contract.
Okay, so, you know, concerning these questions, we've said it in the, in the past, I'm just going to reiterate, the board has a legal obligation to respect any employee's rights of privacy and confidentiality. The school district's attorneys have repeatedly advised us that we're not permitted to answer these types of questions concerning any employee and to do otherwise would subject the district to possible litigation and the cost of legal fees and attorney's fees and those costs would be on the taxpayers. We have fiduciary duty to protect the district's financial resources and not incur unnecessary litigation expenses. So that's the legalese on that. Let me just say something on a, on a personal level with this. You know, we, we get the same questions concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract, really from the same couple of people, and I'm not going to name names, I don't think that would be appropriate. But it is, it is frustrating for the board for, the only reason it's frustrating for the board is, you know, Dr. O'Hara has to sit here and, and, and listen to these questions. And every time we say we're not allowed to comment on a question, people jump to the conclusion that it's a negative connotation attached to our inability to comment or that every time we say that it's an aspersion against Dr. O'Hara. It is not. The board's inability to comment on any employee's status with the district, including Dr. O'Hara's, should not be read by anyone as a negative thing against that employee. You know, Dr. O'Hara has, has sat at these meetings with these questions that come up and he's been honorable and professional about it and I'm sure it's not easy for him. But the board cannot answer these questions, will not answer these questions, are not allowed to answer these questions. And this is the last meeting where we're going to even make a statement concerning our inability to answer these because every time we do, you know, my fear, and I think it's real fear, is that people are going to read into that that there's something negative that the board wants to say and they're not. Again, Dr. O'Hara's been honorable and professional about this whole, this whole thing, so we're not going to keep on saying that we can't comment on it. The public is on notice that we cannot comment on it, we will not comment on it and we're not going to talk about these questions again for the reasons, the reasons stated. I, I will say, you know, Dr. O'Hara's been a wonderful, a wonderful superintendent and the district has thrived under his leadership. That will be the extent of the board's comment on Dr. O'Hara. So, you know, whether people like that or not, it doesn't matter. You know, we have an obligation to protect employees, Dr. O'Hara and anyone else, and we will not comment on it further. Any other questions?
One other question, two other questions. One from Ms. Calasa, asking about any updates on, on curriculum related to family consumer science and health education. I'll just let her know that for next year, we hope to have the traditional family consumer science offering. Some of the things we did this year were necessary due to COVID in terms of tweaks in the curriculum, but we're looking at all areas, including family consumer science and health in terms of the way that we offer those courses. And then the last question is from Ms. Krylovich, asking about the switch of meetings to YouTube. I'll, I'll answer that one as well. There's a few reasons why we switched to YouTube. One is our YouTube channel is part of our district domain, so it's within our data ecosystem and we can have all of our videos in one place. We can't really control the Facebook offering. It also gives us easy adoption of closed captioning for those viewers that would benefit from that. It's high definition versus standard definition and you'll see that these videos are being collated together within the, our hop hog board YouTube channel for easy searching and then we immediately posting, post them as soon as the meeting is over. It used to be that we had some middle steps and we lost the integrity of the videos at times. So hopefully that answers that question. And that is the end of the questions. Mr. Barshay?
Thank you. One more note about our meetings being in person or, or remote. Tonight's meeting was going to be in person, however, yesterday we took a poll and it was determined that at least two of us were under quarantine. Rather than expose those that are going to be around the kids to us and the disruption of having a half-virtual meeting versus an in-person meeting, we opted to have a virtual meeting. That decision was made in conjunction with Dr. O'Hara. The plan is to have meetings from now on forward as long as the COVID numbers remain depressed, to have the meetings in public. We, we want public meetings. We believe that it's important to get community feedback, good, bad or otherwise. So our next meeting is on March 9th, 2021. It's the second meeting in the budget season. That meeting will be in person, absent, you know, any further flare-up or any consultation between the board and administration. Anything further from anyone?
I'm sorry, Mr. Barshay. You answered, you answered the question that was asked in that respect that did come from Ms. Kavanaugh about meetings in public. And also, Ms. Krylovich has asked, when, when are each of current board members up for reelection is, is another submitted question?
I don't know when everyone's up for reelection. I'm up for reelection for years, you know. I don't know about everyone else. Who's up this year?
I am.
Mike and I.
So there you go. So this year is Michael and Mrs. Weisberg. Have at them. All right. So we have an executive session to, I'm sorry, did anyone have anything else before we adjourn? All right. So we have executive session tonight to continue our discussion on the employment history of a particular person as well as issues related to the public health and safety of the community and students in the district. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for an adjournment? Mr. Scrito, thank you. Mr. Fortmeyer seconds. Any discussion? Stacy, are you scratching your eye or raising your hand?
Oh, no, sorry, I was scratching my eye. No, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Okay. Oh, Michael. All right. So with that, I'll call the, call the vote to adjourn and go into executive session. Any discussion seeing none? Mr. Barshay votes aye. Mr. Scrito?
Aye.
Mr. Scrito votes aye. Mr. Fortmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Fortmeyer votes aye. Dr. Krappa?
Aye.
Dr. Krappa votes aye. Mr. Kylie?
Aye.
Kylie votes aye. Mr. Buscarino?
Aye.
Mr. Buscarino votes aye. Mrs. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisberg votes aye. Executive session will start in exactly five minutes at 9:40 PM. Thank you very much. Our next meeting, as I stated, is March 9th, 2021. It is scheduled to be in person. Thank you. Steve, take us down, please.